Mrs. Kozon.
Here.
Mrs. Maines.
Here.
Mr. McCollum.
Here.
Moral L Music.
Here.
Moral D Music.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Mr. Rucko.
Here.
Dr. Dorch is coming soon. Mr. Hauser.
Here.
All right, we just point out Dr. Dorch.
Thank you. Education report, Mr. Naples.
I know where, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Naples. Educational planning, Mrs. Maines.
Thank you. Moral N Report, would I say anything about kindergarten, Mr. Berenka?
If you look at other business on your agenda, kindergarten parent information night is coming up on February the 7th. The registration release for kindergarten should be February the 1st. It's amazing, like there we are. We're going to bring our new group in. So those items are under other business, and here we are.
Well, thank you. The students have not yet arrived, so if anyone comes, we'll break in. On your agenda for next week will be a resolution to approve superintendent Mr. Michael R. Korotka to sign any and all contracts with Pennsylvania Department of Education with an electronic signature, and that the utilization of an electronic signature shall execute and deliver such contracts between the Greater Tred School District to comply with set terms of the contract. So that will be on the agenda next week for your approval. Also on your agenda next week will be a resolution to approve teacher education affiliation agreement between Edinburgh University of Pennsylvania and the Greater Tred School District. Also, next week, we will have an on-the-agenda resolution for approved tuition student for the 22, 23 school year as listed. And our next curriculum committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, February the 22nd at 5:30 PM here in the CSC.
Thank you, Mrs. Maines.
Thank you.
Finance on the agenda for your approval will be, next week will be the treasurer's report, payment of bills, approve Act 1 resolution not to raise taxes above the index, also approve basic cost natural gas purchase agreement, approve the tax assessment of the appeal settlement for parcels number 611414037 and 611414038, and parcel number 610815012 as recommended by Anderson Price. Also on the agenda we approve next week will be gifts, grants, and donations. Project Lead the Way, computer science program. Also, information on the IRS mileage rate for 2022 is, or mileage rate. No, it's two.
Yeah, really.
Yeah, will be 56 cents per mile. We also had a presentation scheduled for this evening, but our presenters didn't come. They were going to present the audit from Terrick Horner-Wyble. Our next finance committee meeting will be Tuesday, February 8th at 5:30 PM at the senior high school library classroom. Facilities operation plan, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask the board to be able to revoke the agenda next week for to approve all of the sale purchase agreement, approve the renewal of Johnson Controls Product Protection, the health services agreement, and approve kids and families insurance agreement for the NPUS permanent term of termination. And our next meeting will be Thursday, February 3rd at 3:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Student activities, recreation, Mr. Moral Naples. Alan Naples. Peral Music.
It's a good fan, man.
Yeah, to be, to be excited. He kissed the last.
Just give t-shirts, more one, more than one.
Yeah, we think one. That'll be a senior night after hockey, and that'll be on Thursday, February 3rd, and that'll be at 6:15 in the Nebenamina. And the next student activities recreation committee is to be discussed.
Thank you, Mr. Music. Will you relation to Mrs. Maines?
Thank you. Littler G L S D Parks and Recreation Commission meeting minutes. The meeting on December the 16th, 2021 are attached. The next Chief Littler G L S D Parks and Recreation Commission meeting will be held on Thursday, January 20th, 22 at 4:30 PM in Union Township Principal Building.
Thank you, Mrs. Maines.
Thank you. Do you go?
Yeah.
The next WIU committee meeting will be held Tuesday, January 25th, 2022 at 7:00 PM in Portland in the American Building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Transportation, Mr. Music.
The report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Music. E W C T C Joint Operating Committee, Mrs. Kozon.
Yes, next week we'll approve, I hope, the right way easement agreement between the Greater Tred Dairy and Linear Valley School Districts and the Dairy Township Supervisors. And this is a grant easement for them to do installs that already maintains the stormwater lines in the back of the neighborhood.
Yeah. They, the board members, for the newer board members, over behind the E W C T C, there's some, in that neighborhood, there's some very serious drainage issues over some of the neighborhood, but also kind of south of the school causing major flooding down by the shopping center. And this is a long-term project that the township supervisors put together to put a retaining pond and some other, some other things. Way back behind E W C T C, there's quite a bit of acreage that the school owned back there, but never used and never would use. It's just kind of wasteland and swale. So there was some consideration back and forth and some things that the township did for E W C T C on their building. And this is kind of a continuation of that project. It's been a, it's a good project for the flooding and drainage. It's really good for the neighborhoods there and also for the neighbors and business downstream of that neighborhood.
Are they still able, we were talking about, so as you face the building, I guess we face the west side of the building. There was all that flooding on the right side of the building. They were talking about, because there's a bit of a hill that comes down into the building. There were flooding issues there.
On the, on the right way.
Yeah, on the right and also in the, in the front there.
Yeah.
And we talked at one point about them engineering it and putting, putting some drainage in to go down into where the stormwater. And I can't remember what the resolution, I think it was too expensive.
It was too. Yeah, it was so expensive.
It was too expensive, so we backed out of it.
I, if anybody has.
The dairy paid for it.
Yeah.
In exchange for the.
It's coming back.
Yeah, in exchange for the Eastman, exactly.
Right.
And that was too expensive.
It was too expensive.
I believe they did, it's been a couple of years. I'll look at it before, I apologize, I'll look at it before next week if anybody has any questions.
There were so many iterations of it.
Yeah.
That I can't keep them all straight.
Went back and forth.
I mean, it's been multiple years we've been talking about this, so.
It's been a, it really hasn't, maybe they bought the acreage, didn't they, from us?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, it was pre-qualified, is what they were going to do.
Yeah, and then they just paid. But it's, it's been a really, it's a very important project for the neighborhood and the businesses over there.
And then, well, the meeting minutes from our last meeting was December 8th are attached, and our next E W C T C meeting will be January 25th.
Give me a mention, please.
I'll talk about her next week.
Next week.
We have a student in the month that promulchered.
I misunderstood, I thought.
She's, no, I'll read it next week, I just have to let you know.
Yeah.
You guys print it out.
You still want to do it, or policy?
Oh, yes. These, all of these are for final adoption of board policies, and most of them were just wording, I would say, all of them.
You have a lot of updates there and just a few new policies that are part of the trial and form of approach.
Right.
Threat assessment stuff that has been pushed out by the state, so.
And we have this on our next policy, because we have priority to handle it. Figure that out.
Thank you, Mrs. Kozon. Technology, Mr. Palmer.
Nothing important this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Superintendent's recommendations, Mr. Korotka.
I saw a book here to do for all the reports. Do you, would you like to do your report?
Sure. And after meeting at 7:30.
I apologize, but we moved them out till 7 o'clock, so.
Well, I can.
It's November.
I have no doubt that Dan told me 7:00, my brain just.
Let's blame our Dan, because he's not here.
Oh, yeah, that's great.
I'd recommend him recording that.
I assume you guys have copies of the reports?
Dan, Dan has them, and they're available for anyone who wants the reports. The committee did see them.
They're all.
I believe a couple kept them, so.
They're all on.
Yeah, they're all on.
Okay, so I'll just give a brief overview then. We issue a governance report each year, and that's communication between us and you as board members. And because you aren't there to manage the school district on a daily basis, we are required to, to outline some of the results of the audit, because you have the fiduciary responsibility for the financial statements. So essentially, you had, you had several new generally accepted accounting principles items, statements implemented this year. Some were delayed last year because of COVID, and, and a lot were implemented. We have a lot more coming up. They seem to be really kicking a lot into gear. Like, for instance, next year, any, any operating leases will have to also be reported as assets and liabilities. So, for instance, if you're just leasing a copier, they're going to want the value of the asset and the liability on there, even though you roll those over every three years or whatever. So those, those are kind of some of the things that are coming up. From an estimate standpoint, your most significant estimates are compensated absences and pension liability calculations. And a lot of those are actuarially determined. The rest of your financial statement disclosures were clear and neutral. We didn't make any significant journal entries, and any of the ones that we recommended were posted by management. We had no disagreements with management. The management signed our, our representation letters indicating that you gave us all of the information that, A, you're required to give us, and that, that it was correct. And we didn't have any consultations with other independent accountants, and there were no other issues that, that we weren't informed of. Now, from a financial statement standpoint, the, the independent auditors' report, when you look at it, is an unmodified opinion, so that is a clean opinion. That's the cleanest opinion that you can get. And basically, that says that there's nothing that needs, there are no adjustments that be made to your financial statements for them to be in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Your, the, the first few pages of the report is your management's discussion and analysis, and then it's actually a management-prepared document that is designed to be in layman's terms, so that anyone reading your financial statements will read that, and so that they can have an overview of your financial statements. The, from a statement of net, net position standpoint, from a full accrual basis, and this is different than your normal budgeting procedures, from a full accrual basis, you have $98 million in total assets. $98 million is basically in governmental activities, and then business-type activities, you have $547,000 in assets. And that, the, the business-type activities is your cafeteria fund, because that is designed to operate, that user fees pay, pay for those. Obviously, it doesn't, but. The deferred outflows, which is essentially prepaid expenses with a fancy name, for pension and post-employment benefits, you have a total of $14 million. Total liabilities, $139 million. Deferred inflows, which is basically deferred revenue with, with pension and, and other post-employment benefits is $5 million. So that your net position actually comes down to a negative $31 million. And you've got $47 million invested in capital assets, net of related debt, but that $85 million really comes down a lot to the long-term portion of compensated absences, the pension, the pension liability, the post-employment benefits, that's really where it comes down in the, in the net assets, in a net position standpoint. Now, from a governmental fund standpoint, which is, is how you normally operate, and this is on, these, these are based on current assets and liabilities. So from, from a current standpoint, you've got total assets of $22 million, fund balances of $12 million.
Laura, can you ask what page you're on?
Yes, and on page 17.
Good, thank you.
Sure, is there anybody else following along? Do you want me to give those to you? Okay, so on page 19, your, your general fund, you had an increase in fund balances of 1.7 million. The capital projects, you had a decrease of $29,000. Non-natural governmental funds, which would include some of the debt service, and some of those will have a schedule at the end there. You can say you had an overall increase in governmental funds of 1.7 million. On page 22 is your proprietary funds, which is the, the food service. You have a, it has your total assets of the $547,000. This is really, this really agrees to that government-wide financial statement we talked about earlier, because this is on a full accrual basis. And then on page 23, your change in net position is $429,000 positive in the proprietary fund. If we go back to. We have a lot of required supplementary information in there with regard to the pension and the post-employment benefits and actuarial assumptions and all of that kind of stuff. So that's fun reading. On, on page 76 is our independent auditor's report in accordance with government auditing standards. This outlines our, our opinion on internal control over the financial statements and, and compliance. So we did not detect any material or significant weaknesses on the financial statement level. We did not find any non-compliance with laws and regulations. So, so that's good in accordance with government auditing standards. Now, on page 78 is our report on compliance and internal control at the federal financial assistance level. And once again, we did not report any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, and we did not find any non-compliance. So, so those are, those are good results. On page 81, on pages 80 and 81 is your federal financial assistance. Now, as you're aware, your federal financial assistance is increasing right now with regard to COVID and ESRS. So, so you're going to see this increase a little bit, but you had total federal awards this year of $3.6 million. And when, when you're reviewing anyone's financial statement, your schedule of findings and question costs is on page 83, and that gives an overview of all of our audit results from a single audit standpoint. So it tells you that the financial statements have an unmodified opinion, there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, we reported no non-compliance, et cetera. And if anyone did have finance, have any audit findings, that, this is where it would be. So, so basically, if you pick up someone's financial statements or if you just want an overview, you look at the management's discussion and analysis and the schedule of finding and question costs, and that'll basically give you the basic overview of, of the results.
Thank you.
So we got an A?
What's that? You got an A, yes. Well, Dan did.
How proud. Even the person we paid her on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you really wanted this, Paul. What's a sticker on your finger for?
Oh, I was going to put tabs on there so that I would know what page to go to, so I didn't lose any. I've done that before.
I know, I know I put you on the spot.
No, it's good. No, it's good, you did, you got an A.
Danny. Oh, wait, Dr. Dorch has a question. Paul.
My fund balance of $12 million, is that true?
Um. The net position, let me see. Go back.
I think, I don't think that's a total fund balance. I think, if I remember from my audit report, some of that was undesignedated and some of it was designated.
Correct. The, right, so the total fund balance is $12 million, but you have $878,000 in prepaid expenses. You've got some in park conservation, and the capital projects is 5.8 million of that. So from an unrestricted, from an unassigned fund balance, you have a $4 million fund balance. A lot of that is already restricted or committed or, or non-spendable.
So that's basically the fund balance that you talked about that you have to use for our project.
Correct.
Problem is, fund balance that's recorded in the audit is an auditor's figure that means nothing to us as far as money we can use. Is that correct?
Well, now you're getting an A.
I just wanted to be clear on that, because I pretty far the past, I thought it was more than a time. We've had a lot of arguments about how much our fund balance should be.
Correct.
And, and if somebody here goes, oh, $12 million fund balance, I mean, that sounds pretty significant, and if you have a $58, $60 million budget, that's a preferred percentage of a fund balance. If you get it down to $4 million, we're kind of getting in the area where maybe we don't have enough of a fund balance. So that's kind of going back down a little.
That's correct. And, and we do talk, and I'm sure you talk as well, about what is a safe fund balance. You get that unrestricted fund balance too low, and, and the state will put you into remediation. You've really got to have, you've really got to have some, oh, you need cash flow, you need everything. So, yeah, so there's a lot, there's a lot to consider in the fund balance levels.
So where would you put us in that category? You're talking about our fund balance that's unrestricted. Why would you adjust that right now?
Well, let's see, let me look at what your bound, what your, what your budget is.
57, 9, 6, something like that.
Is it 4% to 7% or 8% of that? Or is that correct?
You want to be somewhere between 4% and 7% of your overall budget.
4% to 7% for our fund balance.
If I remember correctly, from finance, the other night, or the other day, he felt we were close to where we needed to be, but you're the expert, not me, in terms of where, where we were.
Right. Yeah, I'm not sure what, what the standard percentages are.
I think it's 4% to 7%.
4% to 7%?
Yeah, I think Dan said just 8%.
Yeah, that's.
So we were like.
There's a minimum. There always used to be a minimum.
Yeah, but I think he said we're typically always between 4% and 6%.
Yeah.
Right, and then, of course, you have to consider the, the debt service, the, the trust indentures and all that kind of stuff, too. You've got, right.
And we're right around 6%, maybe a little bit more than 6%.
Okay, thank you, that's what I wanted to clarify on that.
Okay.
Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome. Any questions?
Still want me to do the superintendent's report? Because I'm going to put Isaac on the spot now.
Well, I was going to, I was going to give the opportunity to.
Oh, did you have a question? Was there anything?
Not cheap.
Isaac is just.
Yeah, I was going to put him on the spot now. You have a report, Isaac?
Yep.
All right.
Okay, so first of all, for all the schools, on January 17th, there will be a Teacher Considerance Day, and on the 18th, there will be a two-hour late start. On, then, for all of the elementary schools, on January 20th through the 21st, the gifted students are going to compete in the calculus, calculus solve competition. And on January 24th is report card day. February 2nd is the sixth grade band side by side. And also in February, there will be new kindergarten parent information nights in Ju, in the elementary school CSCs at Bagley and Mountain View. This will be on February 7th, and at the Trobe on February 9th. The German program will present to the sixth-grade students at the elementary schools at Bagley on January 19th, at the Trobe on January 14th, and at Mountain View on January 24th. And in February, the junior high counselors will visit the elementary schools to schedule with sixth-grade students for junior high school. In the junior high, then, on January 12th tomorrow, there will be an extreme pogo stunt show for the students who qualify by selling items for the junior high fundraiser at the beginning of the year. On the 27th, there will be the Top Cats luncheon. Eight students will attend the luncheon with their parents and the teacher who nominated them. And on the 28th is the junior high winter pants. In the senior high school, the Wildcat Fellowship of Christian Athletes is having a food drive before the wrestling match today for the Westmoreland Food Bank for Take Down Hunger. The forensics team will participate in the speech festival at the Keysport High School on January 12th tomorrow. On the 22nd is the Sadie Hawkins Dance from 7:00 to 10:00. Auditions for next year's chamber choir are on January 25th after school. And also on that day, six students who were selected by the GLL, the Chamber of Commerce leaders, Chamber of Commerce, will attend the Leader Cash Shift Conference taking place at the CSC. Students will hear from several prominent speakers on various leadership topics. The Drama Club's Cabaret is a student-led concert, and it is on January 29th at 7:00 PM here in the CSC. And also, you'll be reading up to Valentine's Day that the Greater Tred Junior High Choir will be selling singing grams to the student body as a fundraiser. That is all.
Thank you, Isaac. Superintendent's report, Mr. Korotka.
Next week, I'll ask the board to move on three agenda items. Number one is to approve the resignation of Jason Maruko as the varsity head football coach, approve a substitute teacher and support personnel, a classroom assistant retroactive back to January 10th. I think I'm just going to let Isaac do my superintendent's recommendations every week, as he already mentioned, our 80-day, our two-hour late start. I had mentioned earlier, kindergarten registration will begin online February 1st. The parent information night on February 7th at the senior high school auditorium is at 6:30. That's for all schools. And our regular board meeting is here in. is at 6:30, that's for all schools, and our regular board meeting is here in the Center for Student Creativity next Tuesday at 7:00 PM. Mr. Hyde is not here tonight because he is over helping with the wrestling match, but he wanted me to mention that our wrestling team last weekend won the Westmore County Coaches Association Championship, the championship last week tied them for the most ever in county championship history, and they actually will be headed, the wrestling team will be headed to Colorado to take on some of the best teams out in Colorado Thursday, well, they leave on Thursday, they will compete Friday and Saturday, and then they fly back on Sunday. So they raised that money on their own to go out, it was a significant undertaking, and Mr. Hyde wanted me to mention that to you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Peromka. I'd like to thank everybody for coming this evening. Our meeting is now adjourned.